It is, uh, Thursday, or yeah, Thursday, February twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Uh, special meeting, CAT TV televised, uh, meeting the Select Board at seven P. M. On the agenda tonight are agenda approval, approval of minutes for two six, warrants, public comment, mail, old business. First will be external audit engagement letter, then town office project update, then new business, two thousand and twenty certificate of highway mileage. Uh, friends uponal regarding, uh, request use of town insurance certificate. And John Washi regarding discover panel gifted to panel economic committee, then executive session for legal delinquent tax collector, and then we'll adjourn.
Brian, can I ask a question before you vote to approve this?
Okay.
The agenda?
What?
It's a question on, uh, Rosemary Pelletier. It's a question on legal delinquent tax collector, the executive session?
Yeah.
So it's legal. Is either the tax collector's attorney or our attorney gonna be there?
No, we're meeting with the delinquent tax collector in regards to, well, delinquent taxes.
Yep.
In regard to delinquent taxes or in regard to her position?
It has nothing to do with my position as delinquent tax collector, except for that I am the delinquent tax collector. And I am bringing something forward that is a legal issue that cannot be discussed out in.
That does not pertain to you as an individual.
It does has nothing to do with me as an individual.
Okay. I wanted to clarify that because this being on the agenda so close to a contested election and the citizens not.
Well, this was on the agenda before and it got postponed.
Right.
Right, and then it got, uh, it's been on for, this is the third meeting.
Yeah, and it was originally on the agenda before the whole writing candidate thing, so it was already.
But it has nothing to do with me personal.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted.
Do you need a Bible or?
I wanted to clarify that because I didn't want people thinking that there's something to hide.
There's nothing to hide.
It would be fair to either Ellen or to the citizens.
Alright, thank you. So moving on. Alright, so do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
Alright, so we have a motion, I'll second, to approve the agenda. So, any discussion?
I don't think so.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm, I'm in favor, aye. All opposed? Okay.
Marlena.
Marlena?
Uh, no, I was an approval aye, sorry.
Okay. Alright, so approval of minutes for two six. I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes for two six. There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes for two six. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Marlena?
She said aye.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, Jamie.
Alright, so.
Heard you that time.
Warrants. So for payroll ending two nine in the amount of nine thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars twenty-three cents. Payroll ending two sixteen in the amount of nine thousand two hundred fifteen dollars seventy-six cents. Counts payable thirty-three A, uh, on two eight for five thousand thirty-four dollars sixty-seven cents. Counts payable thirty-four two fourteen in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars seventy-two cents. Counts payable thirty-five on two twenty-one in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars and ten cents. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the warrants. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, so on to public comment. So before we begin public comment, you will have three minutes each, no more. If you're going to be reading a written statement to us, I would kindly ask that you simply submit it to us and we can read it on our own. We don't need to be read to. So, other than that, is there any public comment?
I have a public comment.
Okay, so two people here had their hands first.
That's fine.
Okay, so please introduce yourself, sir.
Yeah, David Fowler, Putting Stone Road West. Um, I want to start first by just thanking the Select Board members, uh, for the work you do on our behalf. Uh, I realize that it's a significant investment of your time and it puts you in the crosshairs whenever things come up. Um, and that's a hard position to be in, and I really appreciate your work, uh, even if I sometimes disagree with your decisions. Uh, I am speaking tonight on the, uh, panel second amendment sanctuary town resolution, which stated in part that were further restrictions on the use or ownership of guns to be handed down by the state, that the town would call these restrictions null and void. I've been told that the rationale for this decision was the Constitution of the United States and the Select Board had heard more support for this measure than opposition. I do firmly believe in the Constitution. Uh, it was written a long time ago in different times, but it still provides valuable guidance on our country's governance. And along with the second amendment, it also delegates parameters around the state's rights and laws. And we're very lucky in the state of Vermont to have a true representative democracy, one where we very often know personally those, uh, whom we've elected to represent us at the State House. When those duly elected representatives pass a law for the state and it's signed by the governor, it becomes a law of the state and the Constitution would indicate it should be followed by the residents of the state. If the residents disagree with the law, then their recourse is through their elected state representatives or through electing new representatives. Panel's declaration, in this declaration, the board appears to me anyway, to be asserting that their interpretation of the Constitution overrides that of our state representatives and government. Such an assertion would be a clear undermining of the rule of law and a precedent to disregard laws you personally don't agree with. I'm no constitutional lawyer, and I suspect none of you are either, uh, but I'm not here to argue over gun laws. I'm here to argue that the town of panel Select Board has no authority to override state laws they don't personally like. Which brings me to the issue of town support or opposition to any resolution. I would strongly urge this Select Board to be extremely careful about assuming that if they have not heard opposition or support for any particular initiative, that it does not exist. This board must differentiate when they are acting to move the town forward on important town issues and not confuse these with issues where the town's interests would be best served by honoring diversity of opinion that might not be represented by the various Select Board members' circles of friends. A few examples of these types of things come to mind, rights around religion and diversity, rights or appropriate restrictions on abortion, rights or appropriate restrictions on.
Mr. Fowler, that's three minutes, sir.
On gun ownership and use.
I'm gonna have to ask you to stop. There's other people.
I got it too.
Okay. Rosemary, did you want to go next?
I'll go next, Rosemary Pelletier. I'm gonna try to talk fast. In less than two weeks, the citizens of this community are gonna be voting on whether or not to continue having elected auditors who are accountable to the citizens and not to the Select Board. Two of the current auditors who have independent careers as qualified accountants have done their due diligence and brought to your attention very specific concerns. The concerns were grave enough for you to initiate a forensic audit, which would provide an opportunity to address all issues, correct them, and then move forward from this point. You have voted to short circuit this process. This board has challenged the integrity and validity of the internal auditors and even called for Crystal Gardner's resignation. I can't help but believe the ballot article to eliminate elected auditors is a calculated move to silence them. My biggest concern is that this board is not being transparent nor honest with the citizens. While you are discrediting the internal auditors, you are also making public statements to undermine the important findings of the forensic auditor. Mr. Jarvis has repeatedly stated that there is nothing nefarious and quotes Mr. Graham as saying, "That does not mean that I have not, I have found problems." Let me put this statement in context. Bob Jarvis communicated with Mr. Graham directly. This is a letter Bob sent on October thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. "Mr. Graham, please be aware that there are strong personal animosities with some internal auditors, some in town leadership, and many of our town staff that appeared to be targets of the audit. I trust that your audit will be objective, but you need to be aware that taking information fed to you and your staff at face value would be a risk to an objective, fact-based conclusion. We have seen many minor issues blown out of proportion. Please be very cautious of the personal alignments." Uh, he responded and then, uh, Bob wrote back. "Thank you for the quick response. I do trust the results will be objective. Be aware that some of the personalities you are dealing with come with the individuals that convinced the board to pursue a forensic audit in the first place. My trust in those individuals has deteriorated substantially since we entered into this. I have heard initially compelling arguments that are not holding up to scrutiny. Hence, my concern. Your respond makes me feel much better, but I am still concerned. I now believe I and the board have been duped. Looking forward to the results. My cryptic language is to raise the legitimate concerns, but not be the source of any bias." And that was Bob. This is, uh, Mr. Graham's response. "Bob, I can tell you the manner in which items are posted to your general ledger financials is highly unusual and not in accordance with any legit accounting practice. Entries are only posted in batch with literally no payee individually checked out."
Rosemary, that's yours, three minutes. Sorry, I'm gonna have to ask you to stop. Okay.
And I'll email all of you a copy of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anybody else any public comment? Well, Matt was just gonna speak to the agenda.
Okay, I would like to just respond briefly to some of that.
Uh, hold on, Marlena was already.
I just wanna say, just be careful what you guys discuss. This is now considered a polling place.
Yes.
So anything that has to do with anything that's on the ballots, this is a polling place now.
Okay.
Okay, this building is considered a polling place at all times.
Alright, thank you, Ellen. Alright, go ahead, Marlena.
I just wanted to say I'm sorry to the community for not being able to attend meetings for the last month due to work obligations that have taken me out of town, um, out of state. And there's been some emails and some folks asking where I've been and why I can't make meetings. And I just wanted to say I'm sorry, but work obligations have interfered with me being able to be there. But thanks to the open meeting law, I am allowed to call in digitally, so, um, I've been able to, to maintain my, my attendance via, via conference line. So thank you all for your well wishes and, and whatnot.
Okay, thank you. Bob, you got something?
Uh, yes, I, I'm just gonna make a brief. Of, of my concern, um, the concerns that I expressed, I expressed in open answer to Jeff Graham. And every time we met with the, met with auditors, I expressed the same concern and the entire board heard it. I, I, every time I heard the conversation move toward personalities and away from facts, I expressed concern. And I'll continue to do that. I, I'm looking for a, a, uh, an objective conclusion and an honest conclusion, and that's all I want. And that's all I ever wanted, and that's what I was pushing for. I, I think if, uh, if we, when you look at the fatality of the emails, you have plenty of reason to, to suspect that, uh, that the forensic auditor was being pushed in, in a different direction.
I agree.
That's all I have to say.
Alright, thank you, Bob. Any other public comment?
I just wanted to say, uh, the board was copied on those emails, that conversation. So it's not, it wasn't a hidden, one-sided situation.
And I feel like we've been very transparent and I can't wait to have a voice after all of this.
And the other.
I can't wait.
We also inherited Article sixteen for the Vermont Constitution. You wanna look at that, in that resolution.
Okay, so let's keep on track. We have a lot to get to, so. Any other public comment? One once, pulling twice. Okay. Alright, so moving on to the mail. So.
Mail. Mail, Paul.
We have a lot of liquor license approvals to get through. So, let's start right at the top of the list. So for, uh, two thousand and twenty liquor license renewal application, this one from Dwyer's Beer and Wine. Excuse me, sorry. No, excuse me. Alright, so we have a liquor license application from Dewar's Beer and Wine. So.
I think there's a couple of them right there.
Yeah, there should be.
Do we have to do these individually or can we take and do them collectively?
Individually, please.
Alright, so.
So I make a motion that we approve the Dwyer's Beer and Wine's application.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Dwyer's, uh, liquor license. Uh, all in favor, or, I'm sorry, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. Approved by the board.
There's room for others to sign.
Okay.
There may only be three spots. It needs at least two signatures.
Alrighty.
So the next one is for Stewart's Shop. So, I'll hear a motion.
To approve the Stewart's Shop.
Liquor license?
Liquor license.
Second it.
Alright, there's a motion and a second to approve Stewart's liquor license. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
I was an aye for approval.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so next will be for Winchester's for their liquor license. So. Alright, so there's a motion and a second to approve the liquor license for Stewart, or I'm sorry, for Winchester's. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, so next is for the American Legion.
So moved.
Alright, there's a motion and a second to approve the liquor license for the American Legion. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I was an aye for approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next is the American Legion as well.
So moved.
Okay.
Second it.
So there's a motion and a second to approve for the American Legion. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. Alright, so another one for the American Legion. Alright, so.
Second it.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. Alright, so now we are moving on to a Better Roads Grant for, uh, let's see, this one was for Skippery Road Erosion Grant reimbursement.
So moved.
Total match. Where's the sign off page? Alright, so we have a motion and a second. This is for a local match of, has a local match of four thousand six hundred seventy-eight dollars thirty-five cents. The grand total on the entire appears to be twenty-four thousand six seventy-eight thirty-five cents. So, there was a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, this one just requires one signature. Alright, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay.
I'm not opposed, but, um, I, I had the phone on mute when I was asking you a question, so you obviously didn't hear. What was it for again? Something chick, was it Skippery Road you said?
Skippery Road.
Oh, Skippery Road. Thank you.
Okay. Sit down. Okay, so next is for, uh, let's see.
Well, I'm gonna give her the whole thing.
Uh, this is for approved pending relocation of the two monitoring wells. I believe these are for the ones out here.
No, they're over on the former Mary Jane's Rounds property on the corner.
Okay. Alright, so this one is, uh, uh, there's a, gonna be a site walk. Yeah, they have to move the monitoring well so they don't hit the sewer line, a major main sewer line. So this is just a, approved pending relocation of the two monitoring wells.
So moved.
Second it.
So there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so, let's see, this is for the two thousand and twenty initial boundary validation program, United States Department of Commerce for U. S. Census Bureau. So it's the final step for the census reporting boundary validation.
So moved.
Okay, so.
What, what exactly is that?
Uh, it's what I'm checking out right now. The Census Bureau now conducting an initial BVP boundary validation program. The initial BVP is, excuse me, your opportunity is the tribal chair TC slash highest ed- elected official, HEO, to review and ensure the Census Bureau's boundary data for your government is accurate. The enclosed paper maps are maps of the CD DVD should reflect legal boundary for your government effective January first, two thousand and twenty.
Mean your boundary, your boundary if it's town, it'll change.
So, boundaries didn't change for the town. Alright, I make a motion to approve.
Second it.
I'm sorry, those are, alright, so is there a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let's see. Alright, so this is an annual agreement for Stan Tech for the spring and fall, uh, water quality monitoring and sampling at the transfer station landfill. Uh, it's an annual agreement. So, uh, let's see. Do you guys have a chance to read this?
Yeah.
Alright, so.
So moved.
Alright, there's a motion and a second to approve. Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
What was it again?
It's for the Stan Tech has provided, let's see, the spring and fall water quality monitoring and sampling of the town, or I'm sorry, the transfer station landfill. This is an annual agreement.
The monitoring wells, um, over at the transfer station that's, uh, part of the study that's going on right now.
No, that's not.
Okay, thank you. That wasn't sent to us, so I didn't read it.
It's not part of that?
Agreement. It's the, it's for the close of the landfill.
Oh, the closed landfill.
The one underneath the solar array.
Okay, sorry. The one underneath the solar array. I thought it was for all the other testing with it.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm gonna add a c because I couldn't read it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
I thought the same company was doing the testing for the other.
Different company.
So, uh, this is, uh, now certificate for no appeal or suit pending. It's the, uh, from the listers, basically saying that nobody's contesting anything. So, needs a signature, so.
So moved.
Alright, there's a motion and a second to sign. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, this one requires everybody's signature.
Marlena?
I'm, I'm an aye for approval. Do we need to stop in and sign that?
No, I only need three, thank you.
Thank you.
So, and then we have a letter from the public, but this was ours, so supplied via email, so board had a chance to read it. Pass that down to Linda for me, please.
I am that, that was emailed?
David?
Was that emailed to the board?
I thought it was.
I think it only went to you.
Oh, it went only to me? Alright.
You and me.
I thought it went to everybody. Alright, well, it's in the mail folder. Remind me at the end of this, I'll forward it to you.
Thank you.
I read it, so I know, I, I read it on town email.
I thought it went to everybody. Okay, so next we have a certificate of highway mileage. So, uh, couple of changes, basically, uh, point oh nine mileage being taken off of class three and added to class four. Uh, let's see, point oh nine miles, CL three, TH fifty-seven designated CL four, not up to standards pursuant to nineteen VSA three oh five A. So this was signed by, uh, town clerk. So I'll hear a motion to approve. Alright, so there's a motion and a second to get a certificate of highway mileage. So is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
So are we gonna do old business after new business?
I think he was just on a wall with signing things.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Sorry.
I think that's what was going on, but I just didn't know.
Trying to get all the stuff out of the way that has signatures, because when there's this many, that's usually when we tend to miss one.
Yep, no, that's fine, I'm just.
And that was it for the mail, by the way. Alright, so. Alright, so, external audit engagement letter. So, we'd already approved their bid. This is their official engagement letter.
Which they need to do anything, I'm motion to approve.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 I'm abstaining. I haven't had a chance to finish reading it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob's an aye.
Yeah, I, I got it. Uh, aye.
Just Brian's, right?
I signed that one.
Yeah.
Okay, so town office project update. Pauline?
I do have copies. Do you wish one?
Sure, yes.
Sure.
Please.
Thank you.
Let's do it this way. Thank you. Okay?
Hey, you almost spelled my name right on this one.
So close.
Hey, at least it's not brain.
Sorry.
That's alright, I'm just picking.
Okay, I'm Pauline Gallow. And, um, last evening, uh, myself and Brian and Jamie, uh, went to the, appeared before the panel development review board at their regular meeting. And, um, primarily three items were discussed, parking, exterior lighting, and drainage. Mainly this discussion was about parking, and it was decided that rather than just look at the site plan and try to visualize the four thousand square foot site, we, it would be helpful for the DRB to meet, uh, right on the site. So this Saturday at ten o'clock, we're going to be there. And then, uh, after the meeting, uh, they'll have a better understanding of what the layout is and everything. And then we will continue our hearing at their next regular meeting in March. And work continues to go on with, uh, the Division of Fire and Safety going through the permitting process. And then there was some really good news. And that is, appears that we will be able to use our vault door out here, which is four hour rated. And it's, um, was made in Ohio by a company called Mossler. And it actually has a stamp for its four hour rating. And, uh, it's UL approved, and it's thirty-two and a half inches wide, which meets the ADA requirements. And, uh, so, besides recycling that door, we're also going to move the, uh, the safe, the small safe that our town treasurer uses. And, uh, so that will be placed in the town treasurer's office in the new select, in the new town hall. So, now I'd like to ask the Select Board, uh, if you've officially, uh, awarded the excavation bid to Hunter and, uh, and that, uh, the foundation contract be reded. Is that okay if we go forward with that? And, lastly, I'd like to ask if there's anybody who would like to go ahead and try and research, to find out if we can get any grants for a photovoltaics to put on the town hall roof on the south side. And if there's somebody that had the time to do that, it would be really, really great. We have approximately, I think, room for forty different, um, panels. So, and if anybody would like to, they can either contact myself or maybe Linda to get ahold of me. Okay?
Okay.
So. Any questions?
I, we reviewed, um, the excavation bids and Hunter was the one that we had chosen. Um, so, I don't, I believe you can move forward with that. I don't believe.
Is it premature to get that without the DRB permit?
No.
What you wanna do is lock in the, lock in the quote. That's what you're working on doing, um, by awarding the bid. And then sending out for the, uh, foundation. Remitting for the foundation.
Okay.
Is there anything that needs to be done with that? I mean.
Not by us, I don't.
Okay.
No, I just.
Basically an update.
Didn't need your permission to go forward.
I mean, the other thing the DRB asked for was a, um, engineered drawing of the site as far as placement of everything, just so, besides doing a walkabout.
Well, they, they, they stopped short of asking for engineered. They were just like a more detailed plan. It doesn't have to be an engineered stamped plan.
Correct, not a stamped plan, but, but, you know.
Yeah, something, they want something, they want something to scale, so they have a better picture when looking at it on what's gonna go where in the layout.
Which I will too. Thank you.
So, so is the board going to award the bid? For the, for Hunter?
Yes.
I'll hear a motion.
Motion? Alrighty. Motion to award a bid to Hunter for excavating for the town hall project.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion and a second to approve Hunter?
What's the amount of the bid? I don't know.
I don't have a picture.
Alright, well then, uh, we can't really approve that.
It's up there in that folder right there.
Which one?
Nope. I think it wasn't. That first folder?
No, I don't know.
In line with what the estimate was?
Yes.
Yes.
Really should have been on the agenda as an agenda item.
Alright, so, I think that's gonna have to get pushed off till the next meeting, when it can get placed on the agenda, we can have the numbers.
But, yeah, we need to.
Yeah, we need the numbers, so.
Do you wanna withdraw?
Yes.
So, please make a note to add that to the next regular scheduled meeting. Linda, thank you. Okay, so, moving on to new business, twenty twenty certificates of highway mileage. Got a stack of those to go through, too. No, we did liquor license, now it's. No, we did, we did the mileage.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
The foundation.
Okay, so is it consensus of the board to rebid?
Yes.
Yes.
They were way out of the boundaries.
Do you need a motion for that?
Consensus is fine.
Okay. Okay, so, we have, uh, excess weight permits for twenty twenty-one. So, the first one is for West Oil. Let's see, do you need the, uh, weights listed out loud for the?
No, just read them off, that was part of the mail.
It wasn't in the folder and it was stacked separately. And it's listed as a separate agenda item, so I'm reading them separate. Alright, so West Oil Company, uh, max weight requested thirty-three thousand pounds. So.
So moved.
Alright, motion and a second to approve West Oil.
I want a blanket approval.
Oh, I thought you wanted to list it all one by one.
They've already been approved by a road foreman.
Alright, so, West Oil for thirty-three thousand pounds, we have, uh, Bernard Brothers for, let's see, sixty thousand, sixty-nine thousand, ninety-nine thousand. For a three axle, four axle, six axle respectively. We have Valley Crane Services.
Bye, Pauline.
Bye, Pauline. Uh, Valley Crane for eighty thousand, eighty thousand, sixty-nine thousand. And ninety-nine thousand pounds respectively. Maxon Trucking, let's see, sixty-nine thousand, ninety-nine thousand, sixty-nine thousand pounds respectively. Maribito, either that's holding or molding, I'm gonna assume holding, thirty-three thousand, uh, times three.
Brian, it's not necessary to read all the weights.
Oh, but I want to. Alright, fine. Newport Sand and Gravel slash Carol Concrete, Robert Green, Barrett Trucking, and Velco. That's it, so. Alright, there's motion, I'll second it, to approve all the excess weight permits. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye. All opposed?
I was an aye.
Alright, passes down. Yep. Alright, so.
That was an aye for approval, not opposed.
Yep, okay, thank you. So, Friends of Panel regarding request of use of town insurance certificate?
Okay, eh, every.
Please introduce yourself.
Rosemarie Pelletier, um, the Friends of Panel each year for the last five or six years has been holding a candidates forum. Uh, and you all participated in it last year. Um, we're asking again because we use the, we, we like to use the elementary school. And the school district requires that we have insurance and we're not an insured organization. So, every year, the select board has been asked and they've approved in the past, and then Linda gives us this, this certificate that we need. So, we're coming to you to do that.
Does anybody have any questions?
The same as what's been done.
Like to make a motion that we approve the use of the insurance certificate?
Alright, is there a second? Harry seconds? Alright, there's a motion and a second to approve the use of the insurance certificate. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, I, I'd like to address it. Uh, last year, we had some, uh, we had some, uh, uh, we were really hard feelings about meet and greets, and there was candidates going to other meet and greets. And, and, and that sort of thing. The other thing is that, um, uh, that makes me a little uncomfortable. One is I'm, I'm not convinced that it's entirely nonpartisan. But even if it wasn't nonpartisan, I'm, I'm not comfortable sanctioning one meet and greet over another. And that's what you do when you vote for this. It, it, even if it's just one dollar, even if it's just being on our insurance, it gives the stamp of approval to one group and not to other groups. And what are we gonna do if somebody else having a meet and greet wants to do it at the school also and comes in and asks? Are we gonna sanction all of them? Um, uh, I, I applaud Friends of Panel for doing the meet and greet. Um, but I, I'm not comfortable, uh, I'm not comfortable putting that stamp of approval on any private organizations of, of political, of political, political work. It's just not a comfortable position to be in. Particularly when you have multiple individuals and multiple organizations doing these meet and greets. So, my vote will be no, but I do applaud, I do applaud Friends of Panel for wanting to do it. All of these are good things to have. Um, and, uh, I, I hope all the candidates attend all of them, but my vote will be no.
To my knowledge, I believe everybody is invited to speak.
Everybody is invited, including all of the write-in candidates that I know.
I mean.
Yeah, I, I understand. I didn't say anyone invited, that wasn't my, that's not why I'm voting no. I'm not gonna, uh, I'm gonna vote no because I'm not gonna put the, see, the town field of approval on one private group over another.
I can understand the not one private group over another, but it has never been any kind of a partisan, uh, organization.
I don't think the event is, but, um, but there's questions about the, the.
The organization itself is not.
I retract the statement about partisan.
I, I don't know that there's been another organization that has requested it.
So, uh.
Well, you did see some active things last year where there was some activity shutting down meet and greets. Um, and that, and, and that sort of thing, objecting to this one and, and I, and I, again, just the optics of it, I'm not gonna.
I think this is only because that they're doing it at the school, and the school requires insurance.
I believe the other meet and greets were candidate, um, sponsored. They were initiated by candidates.
That and by private citizens opening their homes, um.
That's fine.
To different things, I know happened. Personal homes, the firehouse.
So, if any other group wished to get approval from the school, and they could come before the board and ask permission, I have no issue with that.
And the, the other piece with, with ours is that we've always invited CAT TV to be there. They've recorded it so people who can't can still meet the candidates.
And who's, uh, and, and just to be clear, you're not asking for the, for the taxpayers to pay CAT TV for this event, correct?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so is there any more discussion?
That's, that's all I know is that they invite all candidates involved and.
And we treat them all equally.
And that's why I seconded the motion.
So, there's a, there's a, are there motion and a second? Was there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Excuse me, all opposed?
So that's four ayes.
Correct.
Alright, I guess I'll be the only gay.
Alright.
Okay, and just a reminder to the audience, that's, uh, next Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, from six-thirty to eight-thirty at the library at the panel elementary school.
At the library or the gymnasium?
The library.
Okay.
Well, it's not gonna be in the gym this year?
Um, it depends on the crowd, I guess we could move it, but the, we've done it at the library generally, and it's, that's been adequate. Yeah, we did it in the gym and the acoustics are not as good.
Alright, thank you. Okay, alright, so, uh, John Bushi regarding Discover Panel gifted to Panel Economic Development Committee. John?
Alright.
Kindly introduce yourself, sir. Try not to break the camera.
John Bushi, and I just wanted to make a, uh, a statement, I try not to take too much time here. Basically, I saw an article in the banner, and, um, it was about, uh, collect, getting the email for the EDC board. My feeling after seeing that was not great, because it was voted as a wait on that email. Um, so, basically, what I wanna say is, um, I have a few points here that I wanna, uh, bring out. Uh, so, the, uh, board had voted, um, no, after some discussion, that we would wait and pu- put this off. And yet, it still got brought up, it was put in the banner. Um, that being put in the banner, I feel like that was, uh, going against what the board just voted. And, um, maybe a political push. Um, we know that there's been emails with bad discussion in them. From this, uh, the chair of the board, from Ms. McLennethen. Also, um, she has, I, that I've seen in an email, where, um, Ms. McLennethen has, um, stated that in, in the email that she has, uh, more basically saying that she has more power than the select board here. Um, she has to, actually states that she wants to rein in the select board. That means control, if you look that up. So, I disagree with that. The board has that position, that's what I had stated in that meeting. That they need to, uh, we need to go to this board and ask about an email. Also, that email was given, or the, the email was said to us that they have, she was given it as a gift. Um, and it was presented to us under new business and wanted to vote on it right then. I disagree with voting on that, again, because I've heard discussion here from this board, that they wanted to check, make sure the direction was going good. And that was gonna come up at the, the new, after the election. So, that's what I brought up. Um, she then stated, uh, at that point, she had stated that she, um, uh, that she was going to not bring it to the board. Because of the fact that she figured the board would say no to it anyway, because Discover Panel was behind that, or giving that over. Um, I just did disagree with that, again, based on the facts that emails show, this bad discussion. Um, it also shows that we had, uh, the minutes in the meeting, which we have. Um, anybody wants to see it, I do have it here, but the minute said that we would postpone it, and it was put in that, the banner. To, again, I, I feel as a political push to try to say, hey, look at this, is what we got going for the town. I disagree with that, and I'm asking the board, I think, I think it's wrong, based off of all this stuff, this information. And again, if anybody wants to see it, I can show you this information, but I feel like, uh, the board should do something about that. And I, I'm asking the board for, to you, would, at your, uh, my request to you is to, uh, put a vote in, uh, to remove Shannon McLennethen. Thank you.
Harry, you had your hand up first.
Um, as far as the Discover Panel page, I believe that promotes local businesses and stuff. And it's not the town's policy to have a website with local business, if I'm remembering that correctly on our. And if any of our subcommittees wanna take and post something on the town calendar, they're more than welcome to. Um, as far as informational or anything like that. So, I, that, basically, if we, if, we have a subcommittee that accepts something to that effect, I believe that goes against town policy. As far as our, our, uh, website and, um, I can't think of. The, uh, electronic, yeah, web policy thing.
Matt? Introduce yourself first.
Uh, can, can I speak?
I, I'd like to speak out.
Well, we, we just recognized somebody in the room first, so wait your turn, please.
Uh, Matt Barlin, Economic Development Committee, um, uh, so I do have two statements, but addressing that. If, if you look right now, on the Town of Panel website, it's a, there is a link, and it's an, an ex, it, it tells you that you're leaving the Town of Panel website, but you can get to the Discover Panel website via a link.
But it says you're leaving.
There's only one place on the website that allows external links, and that's the community links, or at least that was supposed to be true. And on that website, we have links to, to external sites, but this is very different. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to inject. Take my place back in line, but don't forget to call on me.
So, I do have two sta- I do have a statement written by Gerald Petrusella, who's also an Economic Development Committee member, so if you don't mind, I'll read that. To the select board, as a member of the economic, Economic Development Committee, I'm pleased to see one of our projects on your agenda for this evening's special meeting, February twentieth, twenty twenty. I hope that the details I can provide here will be useful to keep you informed about our work. At our meeting on February twelfth, we discussed the potential gifting of the website, discoverpanel.org to the Economic Development Committee. We identified several issues for which our committee needs to do its due diligence to prepare, to prepare for accepting such a gift. These issues include estimating maintenance costs, checking regulatory guidelines, and articulating policies for maintaining the digital property and its contents. As you can see in our posted minutes, the committee decided that developing policies and procedures should happen before accepting the gift. We have only just begun this work, uh, within the past week, so any discussion tonight is merely purely limited. However, as we have begun researching the regulatory context, I am pleased to note that Vermont law does explicitly allow gifts of this type. And in particular, pursuant to Title twenty-four, Chapter one seventeen, Subchapter nine, Paragraph forty-four forty A. Our committee will be developing appropriate, appropriate policy and procedure in the weeks ahead. The economic value of acquiring and establish digital property without startup expense is, I think, quite clear. An ongoing theme of our committee has been to raise the profile of the town in positive ways. To attract individuals, entrepreneurs, and ultimately their dollars to our town economy. This project is just one of several that we are investigating toward that goal. Recently, you, the select board, publicly expressed your support for the work of the Economic Development Committee. I hope to reassure you that support is well placed. We are not planning to pass politics around this topic, but as a volunteer committee, we are free to conduct our work without politicking, and this is what we will do. Thank you for your time and attention, please reach out to us as we can answer any questions, we are happy to keep you updated with, on our work. So, that's from, uh, Gerald Petz- Petrusella. Uh, so I do have a statement as well, um, and I will, uh, so I will clarify. Um, I was in attendance at the meeting, I wrote those minutes, I, uh, yeah, so we forwarded a motion to accept. And then we did, we did decide to delay, it wasn't, so it was not a no vote, it was, uh, we, we want to establish, uh, policies and procedures. And so, I'll just read, I have a, I think my statement might be shorter, but, um, than that, so, uh, so I'll just say, um, skip the first paragraph, um, so the, the economic, so, the Economic Development Committee serves the people and businesses of Panel, both present and potential future ones. We have worked, uh, to attract new businesses to Panel by gaining clear insight to the permitting process and working with the planning commission to ensure minimal roadblocks to a pers- to a prospective business. We held a career and training fair, which not only provided opportunities for the people of Panel to find jobs and access to, to training for future careers, but also this benefits current and future businesses by having access to a trained workforce. This website donation directly addresses a need, our current econo- our current economy benefits through the promotion of existing local businesses, with the goals of encouraging pa- patronage from both local and non-local people. The future economy benefits by offering prospective businesses, vi- businesses visibility into current panel businesses and an indication that the town panel is business friendly. As a volunteer committee with a current budget of zero dollars, the time, effort, and money needed to create a constant, comprehensive panel business listing website would be daunting. This existing website greatly reduces those constraints. We will be sure to develop equitable, equitable, be sure to develop equitable policies and procedures in place so that this is a benefit for all businesses equally. The town plan references the word economy or economic development over one hundred ti- one hundred times in the town plan. So, this is a small step towards achieving that goal.
Alright, thanks, thank you. Uh, who went first, Marlene or Bob? First one of y'all goes first.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I just wanted to bring, um, just a couple things, just some clarity. Um, John, the reference you made to, uh, reining in the select. John, the reference you made to reining in the Select Board was taken out of context. There was a Select Board meeting where Bob and I were very vocal with each other, arguing about philanthropy. And following that Select, following that Economic Development Committee meeting, all voting members, Gerald Petrusella, Matt Barlin, Michael Carroll, John Bushy, and Shannon McLennethen were upset, feeling that we were taking up too much, the non-voting Select Board members on the committee were taking up too much of the committee's time with our debating and not allowing the committee time they needed to perform their duties. An email went out asking us to please refrain from debate and allow the committee to do their work. So, that's what the reining in of the Select Board was meant. It was in reference to Mr. Jarvis and I. As far as the communication with the banner, it's my understanding, and Matt, if you're still in the room, weren't you guys going to be bringing this to the Select Board last week, but the meeting was canceled?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, so, we can't stop a press release going out that the banner decides to put out and because the meeting was canceled, it's now coming to the Select Board because we canceled the meeting last week. Otherwise, this would have been, we would have known about it before the banner's article. And then lastly, wasn't somebody supposed to be bringing to the board information regarding the CED grant tonight? And getting that application out there, which would hopefully, if selected, provide a very large chunk of money for the Town Hall project that would go directly against the bond that we're obtaining?
That's not what we're discussing right now, Marlena.
Based on the minutes.
Marlena, that's not what we're discussing right now.
Yeah, let's not change the subject.
It's not on the agenda yet.
No, that's what, bringing the information to the Economic, from Economic Development Committee, the minutes indicated that that was supposed to be brought to the board's attention. I assumed when I saw the Economic Development Committee on the agenda that it was supposed to be in reference to the CED grant the Economic Development Committee is applying for on behalf of the Town Hall project.
No, the agenda clearly states regarding Discover Pownell gift, gifted to Pownell Economic Committee.
Am I, am I up now?
Go for Bob.
Okay. I am very concerned about what came out in the recent banner article regarding the gifting of the website to the Chair of our Economic Development Committee, who is also a candidate for public office. Economic development is vitally important to the future of Pownell. At the inception of the EDC, the Economic Development Committee higher expressed concerns of the formation of this committee because I fear that a committee of this type could be politicized. It appears that my concerns have come true. The Economic Development Committee has now been turned into a platform for not only personal political campaigning, but also a place for backdoor dealings outside of the scope of the EDC's intended powers and mission. The position of Chair has also been weaponized against other citizens and board members without any accountability or responsibility for this treatment of others. And I'll give some examples of this quickly if I can, and then I plan to make a motion. But first, most of us have seen the extremely derogatory language used by the Chair of the EDC regarding fellow board members. I'm not going to repeat the insults in this meeting. As of today, there has been no acknowledgement of this behavior, no apology, and no repair or fast forward offered to ensure this behavior will no longer occur. Secondly, the Chair of the EDC, along with a former TA and a Select Board member, without speaking to the rest of the EDC or the Select Board, sought to prevent a capable and willing citizen who had offered to assist in taking notes and issuing minutes to serve on the committee. This was a clear and unethical and discriminatory action taken without authority against the citizen, preventing them from further access to participation in our local government. Once again, this action has not been acknowledged or discussed. Lastly, the most recent unethical action is using the committee and Chair position for political campaigning. The Select Board should never have to hear about the plans and intentions of the committee that they appointed through a newspaper article. The optics of the Chair of the committee who is actively campaigning, accepting a gift from a private organization while actively being endorsed by the leaders of the same organization are bad, and I think that's an understatement. The EDC cannot accept gifts on behalf of the town. The EDC does not have the power to create policy, to make decisions that will cost the town money and time in the future. The banner should not be used to have civic discussion to present ideas for consideration by the board. The EDC's own minutes state that the motion to accept this gift was rescinded pending approval of the Select Board. I think all of this shows not only the politicization of the position of the Chair, but the misuse of the entire committee. And these were the concerns that I brought up all the way back from the very beginning. And we've seen a lot of that behavior in the releasing emails. At this point, it is my opinion that the Economic Development Committee is not open to diverse points of view, is working outside of its intended scope, and has assuming decision-making powers that it does not have. It is using the position of Chair to dehumanize fellow board members and exclude people from participation in their own local government. It is using the position of Chair to actively campaign and work against the elected body that it is supposed to work under and report to and escorting democratic processes for personal agendas. I believe we need to completely disband the EDC and reevaluate the creation of a new EDC at a later date. The Select Board should be hands-on with the creation of the mission, the structure, the process, and the committee makeup and the committee, and re-post the positions. The committee can then be intentionally and actively filled with any and all interested citizens to create a diverse and representative group, and that's what was happening. The diversity of opinion was not welcome, and we see that through multiple emails. Economic development is so vitally important to the health and future of Pownell that it should be not left in the hands of an exclusionary group that does not seem to understand transparency and the way that representative democracy works. For that reason, I make a motion to dissolve the Economic Development Committee until the Select Board can come together to discuss its reformation with a solid structure and mission as determined by the Select Board. So, I'm going to go ahead and make that motion. To dissolve the Economic Development Committee.
Well, there's a motion on the table to dissolve the Economic Development Committee. There's a motion and a second to dissolve the Economic Development Committee. Is there any discussion? Harry?
First of all, was the banner reporting this or was it a letter to the banner? I personally don't read the banner because I don't get it. And initially, it sounds like out of excitement, the Economic Development Committee approved. And then after thinking about it, realized they can't approve something without coming to us. So, they put that on the back burner. I'm just.
I was, Mike Gardner, can I speak?
They would have come last week.
I was at the, I was, I just happened to be in the office Wednesday nights.
I understand that.
Wednesday nights are my night to work as the zoning administrator. So, I just happened to be here when they were talking about that. They did make a motion to accept it, okay? And I don't have anything involved in that committee other than sitting in here working. They made a motion, but then they rescinded their motion because they understood after some discussion that they could not accept that without coming to the Select Board and finding out what the Select.
I made a lot of points here and that's only one of them.
But my question is, I was under the understanding that a citizen wrote a letter stating all of this. I didn't know, I didn't know that it was just directly reported by the reporter, I guess is where I'm.
So, somebody has their hand up over in the corner.
So, Tiffany Swenga, what happened was, because I read the article, and to say that you can't take back information, it was voted on and not, and decided to hold on Wednesday night. The article came out Thursday morning. There was plenty of time to say, hold off, we're not going to accept this yet. We need to talk to the Select Board. Everything Bob said, no matter how you try to spin it, is correct. It is absolutely being weaponized, this board. It is absolutely not letting people on it. And I don't understand why it's even a question to keep it going when it's obviously stacked in the favor of one certain group that has been not great to the town, not great to the people that live here. I just don't understand where.
Mr. Bushy has his hand up. Step forward so the microphones can hear you, please, John.
John Sheegan. That was the first, out of the meetings we had, that was the first time that that was brought up. It was brought up as new business. It's in the email. It was brought up as new business.
On the 12th, right, John? Whatever, last Wednesday, right?
Okay. It was brought up as new business and that's why we discussed it then. The banner article coming out the following day is subject, I believe, to that discussion. I think it was already said to the banner prior to us even discussing it. So, that means, that would mean, to my view, that would mean that the banner article was already been discussed before we even discussed that.
But what I'm asking was the banner article because the reporter was at the meeting and reported on the meeting? Or was, did a private?
Reporter wasn't there.
Okay, so a private citizen wrote a letter informing them of what they were planning on doing.
It wasn't a letter. It wasn't a letter. It was a.
That's what I'm trying to.
To be clear.
Somebody called the banner and reported it. It was the founder of Discover Pownell and that webpage.
So, that's.
It's nothing but trouble, really, what it boils down to.
I think I need to address a couple issues as a member. We have a four-person committee right now of the Pownell Economic Development Committee. We have open, we have open slots. We, as far as I know, we have.
Then why wasn't Rebecca Dragon allowed to be on the committee?
I have no.
See, that's the, that's the issue. The issue is that people are being shut out if they don't happen to agree with the leaders.
Let's keep, let's keep. Alright, hold on. Bob, hold on. Bob, stop, please. So, let's not have the interpersonal communication. Keep your comments directed to the board, please. Alright.
As far as I know, we have open, there's open spots. I've never once seen an email about any, any, you trying to keep anybody out. I've never, you can't even prove that I've received one. I would know if I, I would know if I've received something like that. I do not get involved in any of this. I'm not part of a group. We only have four people. As far as I know, I can't speak for the other members, but I don't believe Gerald Petrusella is part of a group. The other people that have much broader agendas, that's fine. I volunteered my time to try to do some good work for the Town of Pownell. I did some, I did extensive analysis on the, trying to improve the rating of the Pownell school. Just not, we can't do anything about the rating itself, but we can up, press websites and our publishing rating reports. I have no, there's no reason for me to do something illicit or backhanded just trying to devote some time. And I feel like all, all this is, this is really about a website that has business listings. And we're saying, we're saying as a committee, we want to make sure that when we take this over, we will make sure that it is a fully transparent procedure in terms of what businesses are listed and everything is exactly fair and equitable. I, there was, obviously, the banner jumped the gun on this. I have no, I don't know the back workings of that and I really don't care. So.
Rebecca never emailed us with, for a position on that board though, did she?
No, she wanted to come and take minutes, but everybody on the committee actually does the minutes and it rotates. Matt, is that how it's still being done? I haven't gotten to a meeting. If I could respond to someone, that would appreciate it.
Well, let Bob go.
She was actually asked to be on the committee. She just wanted to come and take minutes.
Okay, Bob's, hold on, Bob's speaking.
So, just a couple of things. One is, I'm not sure who's in the room. I believe it was two of the members, two of those members. And you were on, neither one of you were on any of these emails. And so, and I applaud anyone who wants to step forward and serve on any of our committees, our boards, our commissions. But I also insist that all of the boards, committees, and commissions and open positions are ideologically diverse. And that's one of the things that really bothered me about it. I don't think anybody in the room right now, if those are the two members of the committee that are there, had anything to do with this. But the language that was used to describe individuals on the committee that they disagreed with was moron, retarded, ignorant. And this was coming from, coming from the leadership and coming from a former employee. And you could also see from the release of all of those emails, it was a concerted effort to control the membership. And it wasn't just, it wasn't just this time. It was just with this one individual. It was with multiple individuals going all the way back to the inception of the committee. And then to see this, to have somebody accepting a gift from an organization that's actively campaigning and supporting a political candidate during a political candidacy, none of this is appropriate. And so, whether the article came first or the banner, even if without a banner article, all of these things would be true. So, it's not about whether, what got put in the banner and when did it get put there. That was, that was the catalyst that caused this to come to the, forward to the Select Board. But that's, it is so much more than that. And there's just been a lot of unethical behavior. I think if we're going to go forward with any committee, board, commission, any of those things created by the Select Board, we need to be very careful that it is representative of our citizens, that it is diverse, and it is accepting of alternative viewpoints. And unfortunately, that's not what we see. And again, that's no reflection to the individuals in the room right now.
Okay, so I think.
Matt, there's several positions that have been right and there hasn't been anybody else that's come forward and requested to be on the committee, to my knowledge, correct?
Nothing to my knowledge either, but.
Okay. I do know that some people were asked and declined.
Okay, so.
So, it can be as diverse as it needs to be. People just need to be willing to step up and volunteer their time.
But that's not what I'm talking about, Marlena. When, what I'm talking about is the, is the clear, the clear attempts to stack the board with like-minded individuals and to shut people out if they don't agree. That was 100% clear and absolutely clear than when those emails were released. So, to now say, well, we have one open position and therefore everything's okay, is not okay. You can't just dissolve everything that's occurred in the past because we have an open position.
I think there's three open positions.
Hold on, everybody. So, I think we're going off into the weeds here. This is not, this is not what the agenda was for.
Thanks for your listening, Bob.
Okay, so, thank you both. So, anyway, I'm gonna, I'm trying to rein this in. Is it relevant to this?
It's very relevant.
Okay.
I think there is a tremendous amount of confusion between the Discover Pownell website and that organization. And which, if you, if you look at that site, that has done nothing about politicizing anything. Yes, it is true that the person who developed it is very political, you know, in terms of, she supported your candidacies last year.
Vocal, yeah.
Yeah, you know, so, but that's not the site. That's not what's being gifted. There is nothing political about the gifted part of this. The other part I'm concerned about is tonight, I was at that meeting. And John, at that meeting, you said you were coming here and they had mentioned that grant that somebody mentioned earlier.
Marlena, Marlena said that.
And they had said, bring that to the attention of the board here because there's a deadline for applying for that. And I, was it March 1st?
It's like March 1st or something like that. We could be using a very good chunk of money towards that Town Hall project.
Because we're not addressing that issue tonight, we could lose those funds. And that's, and that's, I'm not blaming anybody. There's a communication gap between.
That's a dangerous subject.
I would recommend the Economic Development Committee then, if they wish to have addressed something to the board, should have requested an agenda to be placed on the agenda.
They, they did, and when I saw.
My, my big problem is, is we didn't receive any communication.
And I think.
I don't, I, no, I personally, I didn't appreciate being blindsided by reading about it in the paper. Whether I approve or disapprove of the idea of the gift is irrelevant. It's how it was, it was how it was revealed is my problem.
Again, it's my understanding based on the minutes that they were supposed to come to the Select Board meeting last week.
Yes, but.
Requested to have it added to the agenda when the agenda was being reviewed.
Yeah, so Fred's got.
I don't want the gift. I don't want the gift.
Alright, hold on. Hold on. Fred's got his hand up patiently in the corner, so.
Do I say one more thing before I finish or?
Fred, Fred's arm's about to fall off.
This conversation went way off course.
Yes, it has.
What was, what was being discussed is a pattern of behavior. Where certain, certain board members were, actually talked about pretty, in a pretty lousy way. And members of the public at the same time were discussing in a pretty lousy way. With name-calling and jokes about exchanges. I was, I was one of the people. In, in the email exchange, it was discussed how Mike Gardner handed me my hat during a meeting.
But let's be clear, that, but let's be clear, but let's be clear.
Hey, hey, enough, enough, enough.
I'm not calling you out.
Fred, Fred, Mike, both of you.
Hold on.
Fred, Fred, Mike, both of you, no, no, the conversation.
Brian, I just wanna be clear.
I, I understand, I understand, but the comments have to be directed to the Board.
That's not in an email, that has anything other than my name attached to it.
That's enough. I'm about to disband this meeting.
Absolutely not. Right? Okay.
Final warning.
I don't have a problem with that.
Fred?
That was not me.
I'm calling this meeting adjourned because I've lost control of it. Meeting adjourned. I'm sorry, guys, I'm trying to maintain control, so.